So I'm just gonna now call the meeting into order. And welcome to everyone. I see a lot of wonderful faces in the audience today. Teachers, principals, community members, alumni. Welcome to the meeting this evening. We're gonna start with our roll call. Ms. Tanner.
Cassine.
Here.
Clanton.
President.
Smith.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Jordan.
Gabriel.
Here. Thank you.
And next we will proceed with our presentation of colors and the Pledge of Allegiance. Faith, do you have the information for... She does not have it. Okay. Ms. Tanner. The presentation of the colors tonight will be by the Norview High School Cadets.
Martin. Ooh. O'ward. O. Go through the hatch.
Go through the hatch.
Colors. Hold. Present. Colors. Ready. Cut.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Colors. Ready. Cut. Right. Base. O'ward. Hatch. Colors of the hatch.
Colors of the hatch.
I'm sorry. Item 5.04 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Birdsong.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, members of the board, and members of our community. We have had a wonderful opening of the 2019-2020 school year. I would like to extend a special thank you to the hardest-working building principals, teachers, and staff in the Commonwealth, I would say, and the nation for doing such a wonderful job with preparing for the opening of the school year and being ready to receive our brilliant students on the very first day of school. Our building custodians worked tirelessly over the summer to ensure that our students were welcomed back into clean, orderly, and safe learning environments. Our school nutrition staff made sure that hot, healthy, delicious meals were prepared and provided to students so that they could focus on teaching and learning, starting day one. And we can't thank our dedicated bus drivers enough for being the first smiling faces that welcomed our students back to a year of teaching and learning. Additionally, I would be remiss if I did not recognize the efforts of our central office team for all that they did to ensure a successful opening of the school year. And to our facilities management team, under the direct leadership of Mr. Danny Johnson, thank you for the miracle work. It was truly miracle work that was performed this summer in preparation for the opening. Your efforts did not go unnoticed. Again, a gracious thank you to all who supported the work for a successful opening. I sincerely thank you. This evening, we have prepared a video for you that highlights some of our work preceding the first day of school for our students, such as the new teacher orientation and the new student orientation, as well as footage that features our students and staff on the actual first day of school. Within the video, the school that we are referring to as the Lake Taylor School at this time is highlighted. And as we previously shared with you, the school serves students in grades three through eight. The school had an outstanding opening under the leadership of Principals Patterson and Logan. Some of our brand-new principals are also highlighted in their schools. They carry themselves like veterans, and we are so proud of them for the awesome job that they did to prepare for the opening. During the last business meeting, I shared with you that the division would be hosting our first-ever Support Our Schools Day. And based upon feedback from building principals, teachers, and staff, this day too was a huge success for us. Within the video, you will see highlights from the Norview community and their efforts to engage students, families, and community members through an old-school best practice of knocking on doors and offering support. Thank you Principals Brower, Melvin, and Cable for leading this effort. So without further ado, Ms. Tanner, please, with the video.
Let's roll the tape, Channel 47.
As the 2019-20 school year kicked off, many students and staff members found themselves in new places and new positions. Over at the recently reorganized Lake Taylor School, students in grades three through eight were quickly getting themselves acclimated to the different layout of the school. Everything went smoothly as staff members greeted excited students and helped them figure out exactly where they needed to go. Visitors on the first day were also happy to see all the great progress that had been made at the school.
Well, I just wanted to come and show some support. You know, it's one of our new innovations. I know the staff are excited. The parents seem to be really enthused. I saw the children walking in, getting out of cars, coming off of the buses, so I think it's gonna be a great school.
I think parents were pleasantly surprised when they walked in. They were like, wow, the building looks really great. Teachers were on their doors, ready to greet the parents. The kids are smiling. Everyone is happy. We're having a wonderful day here at Lake Taylor.
Across the district, there were several principals also enjoying their first few days at their new schools. Whether they were former assistant principals, principals from other buildings, or new to the district, these leaders were enthusiastic about the start of a brand-new school year.
I'm feeling positive. I'm the biggest kid in the building, so I'm trying to let my actions speak for everyone else. And if they see me walking around positive and smiling and saying good morning and just being who I am and not changing really too much, and just being that great principal that I can be and leaning on my staff who are dynamic, and I'm just enjoying my first two days so far.
The students are excited about learning, excited to be back from summer break. So far, our parents have been amazing at making sure our kids are getting here. I was surprised about how smoothly everything ran yesterday. So everyone and all of the teachers knew exactly what they needed to be doing. All of the kids got home safely, so no surprises and just a smooth start to the year.
Culinary students received a huge welcome-back gift from a local restaurant owner. Hugh Odom donated $1.1 million to revive the Pro Start Culinary Arts and Restaurant Management Training Program at the Norfolk Technical Center and Maury High School. Odom, who owns 21 Golden Corrals in five states, feels this is a great start for the next generation.
I think that the restaurant industry is one of the last frontiers in America where students can make a great career for themselves if they just have serious determination and a willingness to work hard. So the point of my donation is to create a situation where we bring outside resources in and create a Pro Start program that's not just bare bones, but is a first-class program, and we see if that can successfully introduce this program in high schools in underprivileged areas.
Specifically, it will help us to expand dual enrollment in this area, work-based learning, where our students can go on and do job shadowing, internships, and apprenticeship. But most importantly, they will have the funding they need to compete nationally and move on to be very successful in all that they do.
Just days before the start of school, open houses at Fair Lawn Elementary and Lake Taylor School drew large crowds of parents and students. At Fair Lawn, staff members welcome pre-K through second-grade students and let them meet their teachers for the new school year. Over at Lake Taylor School, students in grades three through eight visited their freshly-redone classrooms and spoke with their teachers. Both buildings underwent significant transformations over the summer, and parents and students alike were pleased with the remarkable changes. Norfolk Public Schools held its first-ever Support Our Schools Day in late August to promote team-building within departments and schools and create community outreach opportunities. Norview High School showed their support by hosting a Unity Fest with Norview Middle and Elementary Schools. Staff members from all three schools participated in activities designed to educate and bring them together before they headed out on a walk through the neighborhoods around their schools.
It's important that we build a bridge between the three schools, especially with this very short proximity. Yes, the principals, the three principals, we know each other. Our APs know each other, but our faculty and staff, they don't. So we needed and wanted to get together to build a better Norview school community, as well as our Norview community of stakeholders.
The three schools coming together, elementary, middle, and high school in the Norview community, is fantastic. It's awesome. And for us to be outside, be in the community, says that we really do care, especially supporting the schools, the parents and the scholars, and city officials together. There is nothing that we can't do here in the greater Norview area.
The staff at Tanner's Creek Elementary recognized the day by going out into their community to introduce themselves to parents and students and formally invite them to the school's upcoming meet and greet.
We came out to connect with the community, to meet the parents and the children if they're home, and just kind of let them know that we're willing to work and be a team. It's a team effort to educate, so we want to make sure that the parents know that we're out here and we're thinking of the kids, and we want to do the best that we can along with them to make sure that each child gets a good education.
Support Our Schools branched out to departments as well. The NPS Facilities Management Team celebrated by learning more about the work being done by other departments in the district at their annual cookout.
Having fun, at the same time, understanding how critical each department is to the district, and introducing ourselves, learning about each other, and learning who's where, so when we see each other, we can understand that this person does this. How can I support that? I do this, how can they support me?
Lake Taylor High School was full of energy as it hosted new teacher orientation. With a new recruiting system in full swing, the district has approximately 300 new teachers this year from various parts of the world, including Cuba, Asia, and Africa.
We're able to find and reach out to individuals across the world if they are interested in trying to come to Norfolk Public Schools. So the system is fantastic because it's an on-time, immediate system that allows access to the applicants, as well as to our recruiters who are working to get them here to Norfolk.
It just tells us that diversity is accepted here, and then it's been promoted, which is a very good thing in the future of the children. They need diversity to accept and embrace the world in which they are being trained to go into.
With over 20 years of welcoming new teachers, this orientation is a great way to start a career with NPS.
This event is a wonderful opportunity to network, so new teachers have an opportunity to network with one another. Also, there's lots of activities planned for them, so they have an opportunity to learn about curriculum, what's going on in science, math, social studies, and all of the other areas. And so it's also professional development that they're gaining through this experience. And so it just prepares them to be ready to meet and greet their children on the first day of school.
Benefits is my big thing. Like, I'm here to sign up for the benefits, learn the new teachers that are in my school so that we can all come in and be, like, prepared together and have that commodity, like, I know you, you can count on me for just the new teacher stress.
I really like it how it's not just like she was saying, the keynote, where you're just sitting there and you get, you know, sidetracked, but it's more in-depth and, like, hands-on experience with, like, 15-minute sessions, and it really helps, like, as, like, a small group, you know, and seeing, like, the teachers having their perspective on things.
Over the summer, Lake Taylor High School hosted a senior festival to help members of the class of 2020 get a head start on the upcoming school year. Representatives from various universities and schools, along with businesses in the military, were on hand to speak with students about continuing their education or getting a job. This all-day event also enabled these rising seniors to talk with counselors about their class schedules and goals for the year.
We've been walking around, talking to different colleges and the different branches of the military, trying to see where I kind of want to go in life and what I want to do. Changing different things on my schedule, getting more AP classes instead of regular classes. It makes me feel more confident going into my senior year.
I tell you, I really feel excited that our students did come out and they're engaged because I want them to know that we are very serious and we take their education serious, and we want to make sure that we have a plan for them upon graduation.
Rising sixth graders were given a two-day crash course on life in middle school just prior to the start of the school year. The sixth-grade transition program enables students to tour their new buildings, learn how to quickly use lockers, adjust to a block schedule, and meet their teachers. At Norview Middle, parents were invited on the second day to meet the new principal and learn more about the transition to middle school.
Well, I was shocked because I had an older son who didn't have orientation, so my son is enjoying it. He said that he learned a lot yesterday. You know, I'm happy with it. I enjoyed the parent meeting to answer a lot of questions that I had that I wouldn't have to wait until the first day of school to find out about.
I think it's amazing because it helps them on their first day. They won't be so confused, and they'll have some kind of direction and structure. You have to be here a certain time, you have to go here a certain time, you have to wear this, you have to wear that, you need a locker for this. It's information that was needed, informative information.
Basically, what we focused on was getting the students the opportunity to just learn a little bit about the school. They're super nervous about coming first time, sixth grader, so just getting them acclimated to the school building itself.
They're excited, which shows that they're nervous, but it was just exciting just to see that they're excited about being here with us.
I think it's helped ease some of their fears about coming to scary middle school. They were a little nervous at first, but today they came in much, much more confident and ready to see what else that they didn't get to see yesterday. We just hope that they feel more confident about moving on to middle school and becoming part of our Norview Middle School family and being a Norview Navigator.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPSTV 47 or the NPS website.
So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Channel 47 for doing a magnificent job of putting this video together. The video just shows little clips from extended video coverage of these events, and so if you're interested in learning more about what we're doing, please stay tuned to Channel 47. That concludes the Superintendent's Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. That was a wonderful video. And now we will turn our attention to the School Board Clerk's report. Ms. Tanner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Clanton, Acting Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, and all of you here tonight in attendance. We have a full house for... Thank you for coming on this evening. It gives me great pleasure at this moment that we're going to take some time now to perform a special oath for our two student school board representatives that are here tonight. We're going to be honoring Faith Handley and Charity Warren. So at this time, I'd like to ask Faith Handley to come forward, to be sworn in, along with Dr. Birdsong and Dr. Gabriel down near the front of the blue table. Yeah, hold her up. This is a great day. This is a great day. Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as student representative of the school board of the City of Norfolk. For a term beginning August 1st, 2019, and expiring June 30th, 2020. According to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. And so we'll have the Superintendent and the Board Chair to sign too. Congratulations. Good job. And next, we want to call Charity Warren forward. Charity Warren is our alternate student school board representative. Could you stand right there for me? Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as the alternate student representative of the school board of the City of Norfolk for a term beginning August 1st, 2019, and expiring June 30th, 2020. According to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Congratulations. We're gonna move this table real quick and take pictures with the board to come right down real quick to take pictures with our student reps. Ms. Cherry, come grab the table. Thank you, ma'am. We'll have our students in the center. Yes, have them in the center. I'm just gonna take a photo with you all. Okay, thank you. We need the board members to stay, and we just want to give them another round of applause. They're gonna put their certificates up and join us at the end of the line to recognize our new administrators. So you all stay. It also gives me great pleasure to congratulate the administrators who chose to join NPS and the administrators who transitioned into new positions within Norfolk Public Schools for the 2019-20 school year. So administrators, when I call your name, please come forward and shake Dr. Birdsong's hand. And as always, we thank you for being a part of the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. Y'all gonna remember that every time I say that. Y'all gonna remember that. When I signal you, you guys say it, right? Okay. All right. We're gonna start with our first administrator is Landrell Gates, Principal of Willoughby Elementary School. Next, we have two assistant principals from Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella, Jerry Lynn Dickey and Tanisha Urquhart. Please come forward. And another assistant principal is Jennifer McMullin-Muller, Assistant Principal at Gant School. So she gets her token of appreciation. And now we have a new team member to the Communications Department, Madeline Karat. She's the Marketing and Media Relations Coordinator in Communications and Media Relations. Okay, and last but definitely not least, she's been with us for a very long time. We want to congratulate Lisa Winter, the Acting Senior Director of School Nutrition. Congratulations to our new administrators. Give them another round of applause. Just standing there, this is a nice evening to recognize people, and we have two special recognitions this evening. First, I'd like to acknowledge Kim Baylor, a physical education teacher at Granby High School. This recognition is not about what she does in a classroom, it's what she does outside of the classroom that transcends cultures and countries. We're recognizing Kim for over 35 years as a longtime supporter of the Japanese culture through her alliance and service with the Norfolk Sister Cities Association and Kitakishu, Japan. In 1985, Kim began volunteering with the Norfolk Sister Cities alongside Dr. Hamada, her teacher and mentor. While serving as a host family for youth and educational exchanges, art and music exchanges, and serving at mayor conferences, Kim was also responsible for arranging buses, matching host families, scheduling tours, drove the van... See, she does. She can do all this needed to be done, and prepared a tree planting ceremony. One fond memory Kim shared was that her family hosted two middle school students for the first host family experience in July of 1985 for two weeks, and this past summer, one of the girls had her son join the same program 34 years later. Thank you, Kim, for your dedication to the Norfolk Sister Cities Association, and as a special token of appreciation and on behalf of the school board, Dr. Gabriel will present to you an original piece of Japanese artwork created by our own NPS Senior Coordinator of Art, Giorgiana Filio.
So I have to...
Reciting.
I have to say, it would be unfair if I didn't mention that everyone here, all of our teachers, our administrators, our school board members, we're all volunteers, and if you keep that volunteer spirit, we can do so much together. So please, continue to volunteer, and this is really a huge surprise, so thank you very much. But it's not about the surprises or the awards, it's about what comes from the heart. So thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, all school board members. Thank you very much. Please continue with thank you.
Let's give her another hand. Let's give her another hand. Our next recognition is an organization that has not only transformed the physical appearance of our schools, but brought a new sense of pride and excitement for our staff and students through their Elevate to Educate program and the generous contributions to start our new school year. The Junior League of Norfolk, Virginia Beach, through the leadership of Nicole Vasquez Del Fario, community vice president, Ashley Chamberlain, community events chair, and Sarah Langford, yeah, Langford, community events chair-elect, coordinated the support and painting of beautiful murals, colorful breezeways. And we just appreciate all the work that they've done at Little Creek Elementary School this year, who was chosen, excuse me, as their 2019 School of the Year and received a special makeover. Please come forward when I call your name to receive a special certificate of your dedication. Nicole Vasquez Del Fario, please come forward. Next, we have Ashley Chamberlain. And finally, we have Sarah Langford. Please come forward. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, I'd like to share our September and October proclamations and observances. First, I want to direct your attention to the wall over here. This is the Suicide Awareness for Everyone campaign that they kicked off this year as this is Suicide Awareness for Everyone. SAFE is the acronym. So for September, MPS just recognized September 9th through the 13th as Suicide Awareness Week and launched the SAFE campaign entitled Suicide Awareness for Everyone. And SAFE School Specialist Dion Mack highlighted Norfolk Public Schools' efforts on a recent Wavy TV 10 news segment last week. The message of the campaign is to share the message that it's everyone's responsibility to make our students, parents, and staff safe. And safe means spread the word, access help in emotional distress, flag or tell a trusted adult if in need, engage in self-care. And the proclamation reads, whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and September 13th, 9th through the 13th, excuse me, 2019 is National Suicide Prevention Week, which both serve as opportunities to educate, promote, and give attention to resources and awareness around the issue of suicide prevention and whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for young people ages 10 through 24, and whereas during this month and week, organizations and individuals across the country will be conducting activities to draw attention to the terrible tragedy of youth suicide. And whereas the City of Norfolk Public Schools conducts annual suicide awareness and prevention training about warning signs and how to best to assist those in need for all faculty and staff. And whereas recognizing that suicide could happen to anyone but can be prevented, and whereas understanding the issues regarding suicide are paramount to its prevention. And whereas every student, family member, and all Norfolk Public Schools' personnel are encouraged to reflect on their personal well-being as well as that of their fellow students, family members, coworkers, and colleagues as a way of taking part in suicide prevention and help people in emotional distress. And now, therefore, the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby proclaims the month of September 2019 and the week of September 9th through the 13th, 2019, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to join in observing this most important cause. So I'd like to ask Ms. Dion Mack to please come forward to receive this proclamation. And after she finishes shaking everyone's hand, we'll just have her come back up here and stand because the next recognition and proclamation for October involves National Bully Prevention Month for October. Says, "We recognize National Bullying Prevention Month in October in an effort to promote awareness of school bullying. The VSBA Board of Directors has designated the month of October as VSBA Bullying Prevention Month. Childhood bullying is a significant problem nationwide. It can cause school absenteeism, mental and physical stress, poor school performance, poor self-esteem, and in some cases, school violence. Statistics show that 160,000 children in the United States miss school every day as a result of being bullied. School board members, superintendents, teachers, and parents play a critical role in creating a climate where bullying is not tolerated. It has been proven when adults and children stand together, bullying ends." And the proclamation reads, "Whereas bullying is an aggressive and unwanted behavior that is intended to harm, intimidate, or humiliate the victim, involves a real or perceived power imbalance between the aggressor or aggressors and the student who's being bullied and is repeated over time or causes severe emotional trauma. And whereas bullying can take several different forms, including verbal, physical, sexual, relational, and through technology such as the internet and cell phones. And whereas one out of every five students report being bullied. And whereas research has concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting school-aged children and adolescents each year, with an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss schooled every day due to fear of being bullied. And whereas the negative effects of bullying, which may include the risk of youth suicide, should be acknowledged. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to suffer physical, emotional, and learning problems which may have long-term effects. And whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk believes it is the collective responsibility of all staff and administration to protect the health, safety, and well-being of all students, to promote healthy development, to safeguard against bullying for the protection of the target, aggressor, and bystanders, and to address barriers to learning. Now, therefore, the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby proclaims the month of October 2019 as Bullying Prevention Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to join in recognizing this worthy observance." Thank you, Ms. Mack. You gave it to her? Oh. Here we go. Thank you. I was hiding it. Congratulations. Now, I'd like for all of our principals, who are current principals, former principals, to please stand. And assistant principals, please stand. You were a previous principal, current principal. We want everyone here in the room to know that this is National Principals Appreciation Month for October. Every year, school system across the country recognizes October as National Principals' Appreciation Month. This is a special time of the year as we reflect and honor the dedicated work our principals provide by leading staff members and supporting the academic success of our students and engaging with parents and the community on a daily basis. National Principals' Appreciation Month is also an opportunity to express your thanks and appreciation by writing a note, sending in an encouraging email, giving a special token of appreciation, or simply saying thank you to a principal to let them know how much you care. Thank you, principals, for all you do to promote academic excellence as you are a vital part of the foundation of our proudly diverse community. So let's give our former principals and principals a hand. Oh, no, no, I was talking to them, not you. It's not over yet. Hold on. We're getting there. National Lunch Week is October 15th through the 19th. MPS recognizes National School Lunch Week, October 15th through the 19th, with a theme, What's on Your Playlist? That spotlights the wide variety of healthy and nutritional menu options for even the most pickiest palettes. As school nutrition serves thousands of students and meals a day, five days a week, school nutrition believes if you eat here, succeed anywhere. Hashtag Eat Like Me. I encourage parents to take a moment this week and have lunch with your child or children or share your favorite recipe with our school nutrition for their taste of MPS, which is a recipe contest as they recreate one of your favorite recipes that could actually show up on one of the school menus. So let's give them a hand for all that they do in school nutrition. Next, we have America Safe Schools Week. That's October 21st through the 27th and acknowledges the importance of safety in our schools and the well-being of students, teachers, and school staff by creating safe spaces free of crime and violence, improving discipline, and providing a positive and safe learning environment. This week is an opportunity to remind students, parents, and staff, and the community, the importance of a safe, secure, and peaceful school setting that leads to academic success. And also during that week is National School Bus Safety Week, October 21st through the 25th. And the theme is My School Bus, The Safest Form of School Transportation. As MPS transports over 10,500 students daily, that takes approximately 350 employees to keep our 200 buses running daily that travel over 2 million miles a year. That's a lot, isn't it? So let's thank a bus driver when you see them transportation. Bus Safety Week is a time to remind students of bus safety and the importance of following the rules while riding the bus or at a bus stop. Our buses have video cameras and some GPS systems to support school bus safety. So please remember while driving to look out for your school buses as they transport students to and from school and keep our students safe. So this concludes our recognitions for September and October. Thank you. You may be seated. Yes, you all may be seated. As our board members take their seats, we have another special guest with us here tonight. We have Ms. Sharice Newsom. She is the president of the Norfolk Council of PTAs. Glad to have her here today. If there's any board members with her, they're welcome to stand or join you at the podium. And she's going to give us an update on the Norfolk Council of PTA and their efforts this school year.
Good evening. They're being a little loud in back. So if you would just have a little grace of patience, I think they may be exiting soon. Good evening again. Dr. Birdsong, Chairwoman Dr. Gabriel, Vice Chair Clinton, members of the school board, everyone gathered here tonight. I am Sharice Newsom, president of the Norfolk Council of PTAs. It is a new year for Norfolk Public Schools and it is a new day for the Norfolk Council of PTAs. I join scores of educators, parents, community members, and friends who are supporting Norfolk Public Schools. If anyone in the room is a PTA member or former PTA officer, could you just wave your hand? Awesome. I love seeing all those hands go up. So clearly you understand and know the power of the PTA. Additionally, I would like to recognize the fellow board members of the Norfolk Council of PTAs, see a few here tonight, including our vice president, Ms. Candace Gabriel, Dr. Candace Gabriel, and our secretary, Ms. Whitney Davis. Several other school PTA officers here, so thank you. We are the Norfolk Council of PTAs and we are in this together. The PTA Council's purpose is to support and guide local PTAs so that they are fully equipped to support their schools in whatever way possible. Our mission is that of the national PTA, to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Yes, we hold fundraisers. Yes, we put on school carnivals and dances. But the most important thing that we do for schools is show up and speak up. You will see us at school board meetings this year and the city council will too. We plan to go to Richmond when the general assembly is in session and we will engage policymakers, legislators, and civic leaders. We will raise our voices to support schools, to support educators, and to support students. Why? Because we're in this together. Along with advocacy, the PTA Council has three main goals this year. First, to grow membership. We have 45 PTAs in Norfolk. And to be fully transparent, the majority of them are active, but some have room to grow. We believe that all schools need and deserve an active PTA. So we're spreading the word and we're asking moms and dads, grandparents, godparents, aunties, uncles, cousins, friends, and neighbors to join the PTA. It's great if you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, but you don't have to to be a member of the Norfolk PTA. You just have to have a love for children and for supporting education. Secondly, to train local units. Running an effective PTA does take time and effort. Anything worthwhile does. The PTA Council helps local units with their bylaws and financial audits so that they can remain in good standing with the Virginia PTA. This year, we are providing targeted support to PTAs that need a little extra help. For example, on Monday, we are going to the Piccadilly Restaurant. Now, who doesn't like good food and good fellowship, right? And while we are there eating and fellowshipping, we're going to talk about PTA. We're going to share some tips and some strategies to help PTAs get in good standing. Then, on October 7th, we are having a fall leadership training at Booker T. Washington High School for all PTAs, and you're all invited. And on that note, I'd also like to thank Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, and school board member Mr. Jordan for attending our recent general membership meeting that you all allowed us to have here. So thank you for your presence and thank you for your support. And thank you all for your support of PTA. I really appreciate it. In October, all PTAs will be invited to learn strategies and tips that they can use. It will include sessions for presidents, secretaries, treasurers, and all officers to share advice. We're going to provide food and childcare because some of us really need that in order to be out. And I am happy to announce that we'll have a special guest speaker that night, none other than ODU women's basketball coach Nikki McCray-Pinson. This training is going to be epic. We are doing something new. We're being innovative and we're trying something different. So you all are invited. Finally, our goal is to engage families and the community like never before. It's been proven that when parents are involved in children's education, they do better. The more families are involved, the more success that Norfolk Schools will achieve. We applaud the progress that Norfolk Schools are making and we know there's still more work to do. But there's also much to celebrate. Let me just say that I am a proud alum of Norfolk Schools. As a 2001 graduate of Booker T. Washington High, I know the good things that come out of Norfolk Public Schools. I'm one of them. Plus, I have witnessed firsthand the hard work and dedication of your teachers and your staff. My mom, who's in the back with my baby. fought for 40 years in Norfolk Public Schools, many of them at Booker T., and retired in 2014. I'm also a mom of a Norfolk student. My husband and I choose to send our son to public school and we are pleased with the wonderful education that he's receiving at Larry Moore Elementary School. So be encouraged, school board members. Be encouraged, Dr. Birdsong. Be encouraged, teachers. You're on the right path. There is room to grow, but the PTA is right beside you and we're rooting for our schools. We're going to help get more families involved and the community too. And we've already started. This summer, we spent time holding PTA meetups at local libraries like Broad Creek and the Pretlow Branch. We hosted a PTA pop-up at Shute Park. And later this month, we'll be at the Nuextra Feria, a family festival held in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. Why are we doing all of this? We want people to get excited about the PTA, to get excited about schools so we can better support children. We want parent feedback. Our goal is to connect families in meaningful ways to schools. And we are intentional about including and celebrating our diverse community of families. Like you, we have big goals. We have big plans. And as we work together, I'm confident that we will achieve them all. Again, I encourage you, if you haven't already, to join a PTA, join at your child's school, join at your neighborhood's school, and if you want to, you can join all Norfolk Schools' PTA. Again, this year, we're trying something new by offering a community inclusion membership where for a generous donation, you can become a member of all active PTAs in Norfolk Public Schools. And I'm happy to give you more information at a later date. But for now, know that the Norfolk Council of PTAs is here to help, here to support, and here to raise our voices because we are in this together. Thank you.
Sharice, I want you to come back forward. And I want your board members that are here, we want to give you a special token as ambassadors for Norfolk Public Schools. So if you can come forward, all of your board members. Public Schools, so if you can come forward, all of your board members. Are there the other ones? If you need more, let me know. But this is a pin for you all to wear. [laughter] This concludes the school board clerk's report.
Wow. What a way to celebrate everyone's achievements and accomplishments, from teachers to students to community members. Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner, for organizing all of these items. And the next item that we will be moving forth on the agenda are citizen comments on the agenda items only. Again, what we are doing is we are soliciting your comments on the topics that are on this current agenda, and then, at the end of the meeting, we will receive comments on non-agenda items. So, in order to address the board, what we ask, when your name is called, please follow these steps. Come forward to the speaker's podium. The podium may be adjusted to suit your height. State your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you are employed by the system. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or organization, ask the others to rise and be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting materials to the clerk for the record. Speakers are limited to a one-time appearance of three minutes. That's per comment period, and we will be modifying that at a later date. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. Ms. Tanner?
Yes, Dr. Gabriel, we have ten speakers this evening, and our first speaker is Jonathan Sexton, followed by Jennifer Scales or Sears. S.E.A.L.E.S. At ten-twenty Holt Street? Okay, we'll start with Jonathan Sexton, please.
Can I bring these to you?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Sexton. I am a resident of Norfolk. My address is nine-one-three Burksdale Road, Norfolk, Virginia, two-three-five-one-eight. And I am also the pastor of Prevail Church in Norfolk. We currently meet at Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, and we have been there. We had some preview services beginning the first of January of this year, and we launched, officially launched our church, March third, two thousand and nineteen, in the school. We have ten o'clock service every Sunday. And I'm calling, I am coming to discuss the topic of the stipulation of the one year that is in the, that you guys have, to seek the potential of getting that changed, either dropped or extended. We have, I've discussed with Principal Smigle in a meeting of this issue, and they, the school is in support of us staying longer if, obviously, the school board is willing to change that stipulation. I have many reasons, as you have in that paper, and I believe I emailed several of you, but I'm just going to bring out a couple reasons why I believe that they should be, that should be changed. First of all, we have a heart for the city of Norfolk, first and foremost. I was born here, in the city, born and raised in Hampton Roads, and also, as a church, we desire to be a blessing to both, to the community, both physically and spiritually. We have currently partnered with several nonprofits in the city. We've partnered with, to do city trash cleanup events and projects. We've partnered with Hampton Roads Haven, which is a home for women coming out of abusive situations to get them back on their feet. We help keep the grounds there, try to do a serve there once a month. We have partnered, we've done some boxes with the Troopers Organization, and we also are trying to get into the school to help provide, just things for the teachers, such as lunches or drives and things like that, you know, coffee and donuts or whatever it may be, just trying to show the school our appreciation as well. As I mentioned earlier, I met with Principal Smigle, and he's given our blessing and was not aware of the stipulation, and said that he would be willing to change that or move forward if that were changed. There's several things, such as, obviously, we're financially supporting the school system as we pay an average of about twenty-two hundred dollars a month for renting, and so we are a benefit to the school as well. And as you know, other cities do not have, many other cities in our, in the Hampton Roads do not have that stipulation. Most importantly as well is that this is not a permanent situation for us. We are not looking to stay here permanently. We are looking at buying a property right up the road. We are, we've already, we've made an offer, trying to get it rezoned and need to do renovations. So, we need, would love to have six months to a year from the end of this year when our contract extends for us to be able to stay in the community and not have to relocate because we do want to be in that area. Thank you very much. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Again, Jennifer Sears or Scales at ten-twenty Holt Street? Okay. Jeff Howitt? You signed up for agenda items? So you want to go to non-agenda? Vivian Monroe-Hester? Okay, she showed up on a regular agenda. She signed the wrong one, that's okay. Lula Sears Rogers? Okay. Uh-huh, that's okay. It's right on. But that's okay. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. So Deborah Ann Key, non-agenda? That's okay. And Glennis Mason, same for you, and Cecy Myrick? Okay. Here, there's a little stand-up that shows you right out front, non-agenda. I'll show you when the, when the meeting's over. So as that, as we see this currently, that was our only individual to come and speak on agenda items, and these individuals signed up for, should have signed up for non-agenda items.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Then, we do have a, an item that we need to clarify on the consent agenda. We will be removing one of the personnel items from the consent agenda, as well as... So we will be taking an item from the personnel items from the consent agenda to be put on the discussion and decision agenda. So, is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda? As modified?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Tanner.
Madam Chair, I move that we amend the agenda to reflect personnel item as the new seven-point-zero-one and all subsequent items to reflect the new order, seven-oh-two, seven-oh-three, seven-oh-four, five, six, and seven, and eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have some. I support the amendment. As been suggested, following our work session, we made an amendment. I had sent an email and recommended that if we're going to follow, which I think is an appropriate process, to amend the agenda for the meeting. Then we should also, as part of our opening piece, ensure that we approve the agenda. The agenda is considered a draft until we act on it, and then that would allow for other members who would like to have items added or have the agenda amended to have that process. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Madam Chair, once we approve our standard norms and protocol, we can do that.
I thought it was just part of our parliamentary procedure, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Just for clarity, we are just voting on amending the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I vote aye.
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you. Item seven-point-o-one, is there a motion on the floor to approve personnel item?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to raise to a point of clarification, a motion, a resolution was walked on to the original resolution that was forwarded from our work session under the new section seven-point-zero-four CT resolution, and that wasn't originally placed there, so I think it needs to be a separate number.
A separate number on the decision and discussion agenda?
Correct.
Are you, are you referring to the CT resolution?
The additional one you added today, yes. Not the original one that was blocked for from the work session that we discussed about.
So, may I speak to that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, just for clarity, coming out of the work session, my understanding was we were asked if we had any additional thoughts, comments, or recommendations for changes that we would submit such. And so, I filed and submitted that for consideration. Again, at the beginning of the meeting, we did not provide an opportunity for approving the agenda. So I just wanted to be clear that I wasn't walking on a separate motion. I was walking on something, if you want to use that terminology, an opportunity for the board to consider, in that, at this point in time, while we have discussed some things at a work session, my understanding is that we were given an opportunity to make suggestions and amendments, and I was bringing my suggestions and amendments forward for the board to consider.
Madam Chair, I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and proceed then with item seven-point-o-one, the motion on the floor to approve personnel item A. There are motion on the floor to proceed with personnel item A. I move to proceed with voting on personnel item A.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question that I actually forgot to ask earlier, and maybe Dr. Birdsong or Mr. Billups, Mr. Cloud, whoever can address it. When we have positions like this, what is our requirement for advertising those positions internally? I know in our policy, it speaks to certain positions that we go through a process of advertising to ensure that we have opportunity for individuals to apply. Can you just clarify what the process is for, for this type of position?
I'll defer to Mr. Cloud in terms of legal advisement on that.
I don't believe that there is any responsibility to advertise, but I would have to check the policies on the subject.
Again, I'm now, no, I don't know the difference necessarily in terms of where the policy is speaking to administrative positions and professional staffing and other staffing, but I do see in our policies, in our regulations, it speaks to the opportunity for certain positions to be advertised, especially internally, to include that folks have the opportunity to apply. I don't know if this applies to not, or not, but...
And based upon my experience, Mr. Jordan, when it's an acting position, we generally don't advertise acting positions.
Okay, I'd just like, if we can just, if we find out after action is taken tonight that, that we should do something different based upon the school board policy, I'd just like for us to make sure that we come back and correct any action, since we're currently uncertain about what's required.
I'll take a look at...
And Mr. Billups is prepared to speak on this. Please, would you mind coming to the microphone?
This, this...
Thank you, Mr. Billups.
Certainly. Good afternoon, board members. For an acting position in that capacity, that is simply that the person is acting in the capacity. When it's time to actually advertise the position for a permanent replacement, then that's when we would actually have an active recruitment. The only requirement would be, again, it's, under the VRS statutes, it's called a covered position, and so therefore, we would have to demonstrate and show that we are actively looking to replace the person at that, at a particular time. So, and I would be in contact appropriately with the VRS organization to, so that they would know that. So, an acting capacity does not have to be advertised.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Attorney Cloud had asked me what I was looking at. It was policy, GCD, professional staff hiring.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Billups.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Yes.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
I'm not in favor of the restructuring and acting, filling positions as acting that have every appearance as, of being permanent. So for that reason, I vote no.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. The motion passes. Next item on the decision discussion agenda, this is revised item seven-point-o-two, monthly financial report. Dr. Birdsong?
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. I'll ask Mrs. Ingram to come forward to share our budget reports for August twenty-nineteen. Thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening, Dr. Birdsong again, Dr. Gabriel, and Mr. Clanton, school board members. I'll be giving you a high-level overview of our financial position as of the second accounting period for this school year.
Financial report?
While she's pulling up the financial report, revenue received as of August the thirty-first was sixty million dollars or seventeen-point-nine percent of our total budget. This compared to sixteen-point-seven percent for the same time in fiscal year twenty-nineteen and fifteen-point-one percent in fiscal year twenty-eighteen. On the next page is our expenditures for the same time period, and at the end of August, we had encumbered or expended thirty-four million dollars or ten-point-two percent of the total budget, and that compares to nine-point-five percent for the same time period last year and three-point-eight percent in fiscal year twenty-eighteen. And we had no budget transfers. There was fifty thousand dollars or greater for that accounting period. And behind that, again, is just another presentation in summary form that compares year to year and giving you explanations of variances that's ten percent or higher in the difference between the two years. Questions?
Questions, Ms. Hampson?
Ms. Ingram, as you know, I've requested a audit of all of our grant funding budgets, and one of the main reasons for that was that we will have the spend-out for all the title money, spending levels or spend-outs for the Title I money, September thirtieth, which is twelve days from today. So, since, and that's why I requested to have copies of those budgets here tonight, because, as we know, the title money, we get a, we have a, actually, three Title I budgets now. We have the twenty-seventeen-eighteen budget, which has finished its second year and should be zeroed out in twelve days. We have the eighteen-nineteen budget, which is last year's budget, that we should have a minimum of eighty-five percent spent by September thirtieth, which is twelve days away. And then hopefully, if we got our application in quickly and everything was in alignment with requirements, the new nineteen-twenty budget, which started July first, or as soon as we received it, will then start its two-year run. So I'd like to at least get the answer to two questions. Is the twenty-seventeen-eighteen budget zeroed out?
As of today, no, ma'am. You have a report that should have been on the...
I didn't get that report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We not distributed it, but they... That is the report that you had... Thank you for providing it, first of all, because I was disappointed when I did not have it, and it wasn't on board docs.
Okay. No, we did, we did not put it on board docs. We, it was supposed to be up there today.
That's fine.
So as of today, all of the twenty-seventeen, no, ma'am, if you look at the report you received, have not been expended. There are some with several thousand dollars, may, there's one with like two-hundred-some thousand dollars, but there is a plan that by the end of September thirtieth, all those funds will be encumbered.
Are all of those orders for reimbursement already in to the State Department?
You cannot seek... You cannot seek reimbursement until after you have actually done the expenses.
So how will they be ready by September 30th?
The expenditures, encumbrance by putting in purchase orders, that will encumber the funds. According to the rules, that by September 30th, we will have expended or paid the bill or have encumbered, have an open purchase order to buy the items by September 30th.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
By September 30th, we plan to have $0 left in those grants. We actually have until November 15th to seek reimbursements for those grants.
All right, so as, so what you're saying now is that we are, because remember this 20, I think we can all remember, the nightmares of 2015.
Close to 2015, what happened up there?
And that is why I've been asking to have this monitored so carefully. Because I, and I don't want to see these massive spend downs happen either. So I'm assuming that the encumbrance and things that we're putting in is not a massive spend down, but it's systematic spending of our money to best help children.
Yes, ma'am. And then you know too, you have a budget and you have a plan, and there could be differences in salaries, expenditures, or you may get quotes and the actual building come in less than what we had anticipated. So in the end, in the month of September, what we have been doing for the last several years is realigning those dollars so that we can spend those dollars. This is not massive spend down. If you will look at the report that we gave in June, that, that was for the end of the quarter of June and compare it to this, you can see that we have been encumbering those funds since then. But as of the 16th, Monday, when we did the report, there are still some funds that have not been totally encumbered. But the plan is to have those encumbered by September 30th.
All right, and you, could you possibly provide an update for us at the next meeting to let us know that that has happened when October rolls around?
Yes, ma'am. That will be your normal report, because we report on quarterly basis, so at the end of Sep...
Right, I know I'm the one that requested it. However, because of the ending deadline looming in 12 days, I wanted an update. And that's why I asked for an extra update at this time, so I could be sure that we were on track to do that without having to go to the State Department on bended knee and explain to them why we hadn't split the money they gave us.
So with your October report, you should be getting the quarterly September report.
And at that time, we'll see all this.
You should see all, everything that has been encumbered according to the plan.
All right, and at this time also, has our 2019-20, Title I budget been approved and is already in the schoolhouse to help our children?
I cannot answer that specifically whether it's been proven allocated. As you know, there's a lot of times with the 2020, the full fiscal year starts with October 1st. But it does allow you to have expenditures from January through Octo, I'm sorry, July through October.
But I also know, since I was one that had to come in and clean up after 2015, that if we have our application in by July 1st, that usually the money would be in the schoolhouse by the day school started, and that's what my question is. Could I ask perhaps the person that's in charge of the Title I budget?
Has it been approved yet? Ms. Malinak?
Ms. Malinak, do you mind coming to the microphone to the podium?
I know it's been submitted. I'm not sure about the approval.
Good evening, School Board. Yes, the application was submitted right after you approved it in June. So I believe it was on June 26th it was submitted. The schools do have access to all of their funds. It has not been approved. The state has asked us to make a minor revision on some of our unmeasurable targets. And so we will be then resubmitting, but that does not hold the schools up from actually having access and being able to spend their funds.
And so at this time, there's been no changes in the school's budget for 2019-20? For the 2020 budget, the budgets that the principal submitted for that?
They're preliminary.
Have gone through with no changes?
Some will get actually additional funds, some will have less funds. And it's because when we plan for it in the spring, it's a preliminary. We have received our final allocation, and so all of those allocations get adjusted slightly based on that.
Slightly would be a few hundred dollars?
We have to do...
Thousands, tens of thousands?
It would vary from school to school. We have to do a reallocation of funds based on some of the methodology that the DOE is now requiring us to use. So we're actually meeting with all of the schools currently to go over their new allocations, but it does not affect staffing, and it does not affect their planned purchases.
So their new allocation, if they have a reduction, would not, when you say it doesn't affect staffing, that means that the part-time interventionist would not be affected by that?
Correct. All full-time positions and any of their planned part-time positions would still go forward as planned.
But there will be schools that are affected now and will be getting a reduction in their money for this year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question.
Ms.?
Ms. Ingram, is there an acceptable percentage of use? Like, is the target, I know the target is 100%, but is there an acceptable percentage, like 98, 99? We typically try to spend it all.
Yeah, certainly.
But no, we don't set what the target is, except, our target is 100%. The grantor, those who grant the funds? Oh, those who are granting the funds? I haven't seen anything in writing that they are saying that you are shooting for any acceptable percentage.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Just a general comment. I would support Ms. Hampson's concerns that she's raised about the Title I. I just want a little clarity, because the quarterly grant reports that we've, we're reviewing today and have been reviewing since 2015, as I recall, was part of our board's effort at that time to ensure that we were on target and that this is something that we've now been doing for four-plus years. And I'm glad that we are continuing to do that. And we also had considered as part of our accountability plan and our scheduling that there would also be times we would be able to, at a work session or to a special session, to be able to go in and get a better understanding of how the resources are aligning to the academic program and the outcomes. So I'm not clear on the cleanup piece, but I do know that this has been a report that...
It's a practice.
Practice that we've been implementing as part of trying to make sure that we don't find ourselves back where we once were.
Yes.
Yes, I'm familiar with that. I'm the one that wrote those timelines back in 2015.
Okay, well, thank you.
Faith? Faith has a question.
I do. You mentioned, correct me if I'm wrong, that some schools will be receiving less funding this school year. Do you know what schools that will be?
Sure, and just to provide clarification, when I say less funding, and in the springtime, we work with all of the Title I schools. We give them what we call a preliminary allocation. Of course, that can change depending on what actually happens with the final allocation, which we typically don't get into October, November. We were fortunate enough to get it this year, which then we have to change some of the allocations based on what we get and what we're required to do. I do know which schools, I could not tell you off the top of my head, which ones got increases and which ones are getting less than what we had told them in the spring. But we, I do have that available.
One last question then. Are any of those schools, SSA schools, were, any of the SSA schools have their funding cut?
Some yes, some no.
That's very disappointing.
Agreed.
Are there any further questions regarding the presentation of the monthly financial reports?
Thank you, Mrs. Ingram.
Thank you. Can I have a motion on the floor to approve the monthly financial reports as presented? I move to approve the monthly financial report as presented. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda, item 7.03, Transfer of School Bus to Norfolk Fire and Rescue. Dr. Burson?
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. Mr. Hazalat is, will be joining us at the podium, so he can provide additional information related to this matter. Mr. Hazalat?
Thank you, Dr. Burson, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, members of the board. Norfolk Public Schools has been contacted by the Norfolk Department of Fire Rescue Training Division about acquiring a surplus school bus. We provided one for them about, between 13 and 15 years ago, and they're still using it. But, and it's time, it's time to take that one out of service. So we have identified a bus that has been already scheduled to be surplused. And that bus was, is going to be replaced with a, with a new, a newer model with enhanced safety features. The unit that we're recommending to be transferred is bus number 230, which is a 1998 64-passenger bus, and it will be used to support the fire department's training program, as I said. All the markings, safety features, such as lights, stop arms, crossing control gates, all that will be removed prior to the transfer, and your support of this transfer is requested. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the transfer of the school bus 230 to the Norfolk Fire and Rescue?
I'd like to make a motion that we transfer the school bus to the Fire and Rescue Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Hazalat. Next item on the agenda, 7.04, CTE Resolution. Allow Mr. Clanton to speak to this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the work session, I presented to the board a resolution regarding CTE, which was in the planning, which was essentially to give this board an opportunity to take a vote, to signal to the community and broader community that we were still in support of CTE, and we wanted to see a plan come forth. There were two questions that were raised in there, Mr. Jordan and Ms. Basine said, why did we need to take this vote? We're still committed to it. A lot of work has happened. I'm with it. I did take it upon myself, and after a meeting, I had a one-on-one meeting with Mr. Jordan to identify and to get some additional information, and to really just to hear about it. And so after that and after consideration, I agree. I think that there's been a considerable amount of work that's been done on it. And I think that there's still work that's happening within the committee level. And so at this particular point in time, Madam Chair, I'd like to table in a consideration of the resolution and to, at a later time, once we've actually gotten some more clear information, particularly with the feasibility study, back to us, there's been some discussion about having that updated, and as well as looking at some additional programming and some funding structures. So at this time, I, as the maker of the motion, would like to make a motion to postpone any action on this motion, this resolution to a later time.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
No, I'd like to, Madam Chair, sorry. I appreciate the consideration. Mr. Clanton is correct. We did have a conversation. I would ask that the board take the time to read through what I submitted to you, largely because I think that as I was trying to share at the last work session and at the meeting when this was first introduced, there has been significant amount of work that's taken place since 2015. And part of our educational planning, part of our facilities, these discussions have been had and considered. And part of what I wanted to make sure that we give attention to, at least as part of what past discussions have been around, when we started having the discussion about the CT school at Booker T., there are a lot of issues that we said we needed to consider. And so if we're going to go back and consider things, I think it's also an opportunity for us to look at attendance zones as the CT, as Booker T. is being impacted by the St. Paul's area plan. And I don't know if this board is aware, but when Booker T. was impacted by the Broad Creek Revitalization Hope 6 Plan, the data showed as of 2014 that the Booker T. area, or the Broad Creek area, had lost enrollment by about 1,000 students. And so now, as is identified in the St. Paul's area plan, we're impacting student enrollment once again in that area. And that's why my advocacy continues that we look at this as an opportunity to build a first-rate Booker T. that aligns with the previous commitments we had made around CTE, STEAM, and arts. And that we take this opportunity to, as our accountability plan calls for, reevaluate our partnerships and our commitments. And as part of any resolution, have the city council, Greater Norfolk Corporation, and other partners also pass resolutions, so they were all on the same page and clear about what we're trying to achieve. But I thank you for, for the action that Mr. Clanton has taken tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you for your comments. Any further discussion? I would just say that although we are tabling the resolution, certainly the work and efforts to keep the momentum going for the rigorous programming that we have right now, and the development of partnerships and work through Tywater Community College and other business entities is still ongoing and quite wonderful. And I would invite any of you all with Ms. Goshen to tour Norfolk Technical Center and to see the amazing things that are happening in that building and in each of our high schools, where career and technical education is taking place, so.
Madam Chair, if I could, you know, the document, the resolution that Mr. Jordan presented with Booker T. Washington High School, you know, and what's tabling the other item there, I am still not 100% on putting CTE at Booker T. I want to make sure that Booker T. Washington High School has a top-flight program and facility, and I'm committed to that, and to continue to work with them. So I appreciate this being here. It talks about CTE. But I know that they want an arts program. I know that they want to be at the table. And I know that we're making some efforts to do that, and I'm glad to see them here tonight. But I wanted to see us continue to have those conversations and that they're at the table, and that we continue to make sure that there's the best program at Booker T. Washington High School that could be possible, that everyone can be proud of.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, you know, my, my resolution speaks to that. You know, my comments earlier, I agree. What unfortunately history has shown us is that if we don't put things in writing and have all parties affirm to what's being put in writing, then things get forgotten and get lost. Even as we talked about this 2015 resolution, the resolution was brought to us so that it could be taken to the city council and taken to business community and philanthropic community for them to, especially the council, to then bring forward funding in order to support the school wherever it was. So we have continued to work, and Norfolk Public Schools has continued to make its commitment. And I just pointed out in my draft, and I just want to point out draft resolution, that already in the Choice Neighborhood Initiative that the city has submitted to HUD and won funds for, in that document, it references CT at Booker T. It has letters of support from the Greater Norfolk Corporation. It has the signature of the city manager at the time. And so if we're going to do something different, I think that's part of the collaboration that needs to take place. I don't see this as either or. What the discussion has been since 2015 is that we can do it all. We can have the career focus. We can have the arts. We can have the STEAM. And we can make a commitment to Booker T., as we've talked about before, to be the shining star in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And I think our history has been that we don't always take the approach that we can do whatever it takes on one side of town, as we may do on another side of town. So I think it's important to keep the coupling of Maury and Booker T. together, so that if we're going to do something for one, we're going to make sure we're going to do something for the other. And I think we can continue to aspire higher for Booker T. And right now, I think that this is an opportunity to do so. And I've said that publicly and in meetings, and we'll continue to do so.
Mr. Jordan, as you had stated, in that same spirit, we're doing one for the other. Right now, proposal says the CTE was at Booker T. Washington High School would be 100% choice. And that's not the same thing that they're talking about at Maury High School.
There is no such, as far as what the...
In the draft, everything that we've seen, so.
As far as what the...
I'm not for that.
Just for clarity, which draft are you referring to?
The presentation that we've submitted here, the report that I gave out, the report out, all the committees that you had set on was about 100% choice school.
No, that's, that's, that's what I tried to explain.
Sitting in the rooms, 100% choice.
I was trying to explain before, that is not what we discussed. That's not what's been agreed to. I'm trying to explain before, that is not what we discussed. That's not what's been agreed to. That was not in the resolution, and that's why I recommended that the board go back.
Cool in my resolution. That's why I'm table.
Okay, so.
It's just not accurate. I think it has the tendency to inflame the community. It's just not accurate.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor right now to accept.
Motion to postpone.
To postpone the vote for the CTE, to reaffirm the CTE resolution. We have a second. We have had discussion. I will call the question. Ms. Tanner?
Bassin?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item seven point oh five, the School Board Advisory Committee update. Ms. Tanner, I know that you have been working very hard on this topic. If you would like to bring an update to the board, that'd be wonderful.
Okay. Now stay here or go forward?
Why don't you go to the podium?
Good evening again. I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking tonight, but bear with me, everybody. This is an exciting topic, our School Board Advisory Committee and the update that I want to bring to the school board tonight. The four School Board Advisory Committee liaisons for gifted education, special education, school health, and career and technical education. We had a discussion and met to discuss the aligning the bylaws, the guidelines, and the practices of each advisory committee to ensure that they align with the School Board Advisory Committee policy. We found that some of the committees' terms of service differ from others, and members serve longer terms due to the lack of the new members, or some members had been a lot of helpful, but they've stayed on to those committees longer than what they should have. We, and we appreciate that institutional knowledge, but we want to make sure that everyone's bylaws and everybody's practices are in alignment with one another and keep moving everything forward. So to address the compliance with term limits as we work to align them to the School Board Advisory Committee policy, there was a discussion about this particular concern, and it was decided to pro, to propose to the school board that we suspend the term limit rules for one calendar year and carefully review the bylaws and make this provision that will be presented to the school board at the October school board meeting. If this is agreed upon by the board, this will allow full vetting of the bylaws and making sure they're in alignment for all the advisory committees and the opportunity to promote and make individuals aware of the advisory committees so they can apply to serve on these committees. And I'm excited to know that we have come together, the four liaison individuals, and we're going to host a training informational meeting on October twenty-second from six to seven right here in the boardroom. And we're inviting all the committee members who are currently a part of that, the liaison sent out a saved date this week, where we're going to have a nice flyer that's going to go out to the liaisons to share with their individuals and to post on the MPS website and in social media. So anyone who's interested in serving on these committees can come here for that. In addition to that, we're going to be talking about, each one of the liaisons is going to share what their program is about, what they're doing. So each, you may have someone who serves on CAC that may want to come to GAC. Just so everyone's fully aware of the committees and what they could possibly do if they termed out on one particular committee. In addition to that, it's important for us to have records to know who is on what committee, some type of streamlined opportunity. When I presented to you all back, I think in August, or maybe was it July, one of the two, we have a new website. And we have this, School Board Advisory Committee has a website where you can go on and you can apply. So what we need everyone to do that's a part or want to be a part of these committees, to come here that night, you have the opportunity, we'll have six laptops set up where you can comment and you can reapply so we can have one stationary place with all the applications and all the information that the, the applications will come to me and the liaisons. So we won't have a future situation where we don't know term limits, who's applied, or the background information, or trying to find the information from somewhere else. We'll just have one whole site that has that all so we can get things started, streamlining the process. And of course, we're going to talk about the FOIA situation, Freedom of Information, how, you know, using your particular emails, I know with CAC and, I mean, SHAC and I think Career and Tech, those are some business folks that may have business email addresses, but you have some personal emails that individuals are using, and we need them to be well-versed in understanding FOIA. So we're going to be talking about that as well. And also during this meeting, it's going to allow them to just really talk about, the liaisons to talk about what their programs are really about and really, you know, inform the community. So again, a complete agenda will be provided soon. I'll be meeting with them next week and having conversations about that agenda. Some of the topics on the agenda will cover, like I said, creating a timeline for school board members to respond to advisory committee reports. That was a discussion that we had, you know, I sent a report in, when am I going to hear back from the school board? So setting up a particular guidelines of when you present this information to the board, when is the board's responsibility to respond back to you? And then an opportunity to come before the board and speak. And there were some conversations about, well, how about quarterly? Each one of the advisory committees come quarterly and speak, or do two-by-twos like GAC and CAC, what could start like in October, and have a continuous conversation and information. Could be a board meeting or at a work session. And then also having them even come to a work session and share. You know, it's, it's just a matter of, it's, it's fluid and robust of what we're doing, and it's a work in progress. But I think we're on the right track with getting everybody in alignment, getting them passed this year, showing the folks that we appreciate them. And also at this meeting, we'll be giving pens to those individuals too and honoring them for their service. Because if, most of all, we want them to support our students and our staff and what we're doing. We don't want to turn anyone away, but we want to also open the door for new folks who want to come through. So that's pretty much the update. And October twenty-second, from six to seven, you're welcome to come and join us. And if you have any questions, anybody can email me, KarenTanner@MPSKtwelve.com if you want to come, or they can reach out to the liaisons or go visit the webpage, which has a lot of information about these different advisory committees. Yes, ma'am.
So, Ms. Tanner, if, if someone has a conflict on the night of October twenty-second, and they still would like to put forth an, an application, tell us a little bit about that.
Okay. If someone is not able to come to the training, they can still go to our, if they call me at the, at the school board office at six-two-eight, and everyone's watching, seven-five-seven-six-two-eight-three-nine-nine-four, you can call me or you can email me, and I will direct you to the website. And you can go right on the website and apply. You can just keep applying. Yes, ma'am.
First, thank you, thank you for your, for your work on this. But I do have several comments and concerns related to this process. As Ms. Tanner just stated, alignment with the bylaws and the policies is really important. And that was an issue back in June when we first had those policies brought before us. That was an issue where I had concern and voted against, against it, against those changes to those policies at that time. Based on those bylaws, the process for bringing new members forward is different from what you have just stated. So again, I think, I think we have to be careful. I think we're going to get into this rut where the process is, the process is also out of alignment with the bylaws and the policy. For instance, we have left out the nominating committee of, that some of our advisory committees have, where the nominating committee of, of like the GAC, for instance, in the bylaws, it says that the nominating committee can't bring forward members to the school board. And so this process leaves that piece out.
Let me clarify that for you.
Okay.
They can apply, but it goes back to the liaisons, and it still comes back to that committee for them to do just what you're saying. This just gives them an opportunity to know where to go to apply, to let somebody know that I want to apply, I want to be a part of this committee, but it still goes through the same process that you have.
Okay.
That doesn't change.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
The second piece is, so I'm one of the liaisons to the advisory, well, to the advisory committees. And this is the first that I'm, I haven't been part of these meetings where you, I believe I heard you say, state that liaison, you met with liaisons.
Yes, as your liaison for gifted, for special education. We needed to come together and fully understand.
Huh? Not the board liaisons.
The school board liaisons, your, Ms. Goshen.
Oh, administrative liaison.
Yeah, not you, just administration. They're the liaisons to these committees.
Okay.
On behalf of the school, school system.
Okay. All right. This is, this is a very big task that you've taken on, and, and I do appreciate it. However, that direction, I don't recall coming from the full board. I know you presented at the last, at the last meeting, but, you know, I'd like for us to at some point get, get to a place where we're not somewhat blindsided by these activities that are going on.
I don't, I don't see that anyone is blindsided. We have advisory committees to the board. We are the board. Ms. Tanner is the acting board clerk. And, I mean, if you would like to have it as a vote to assign her this task, but it's a natural item. I believe it is a part of the job description with the advisory committees. I, I could be mistaken on that part. But I, I, I thank her for her service and for what she's done to lead this effort.
Right. And, and again, I'm not, it's not about Ms. Tanner. This is about us as a board having discussion about what direction we want to go in, in terms of our advisory committee. It is not at all a reflection of the great work that she has put forward. It is about our process. So I will leave it there.
Yeah.
And I did want to state, as part of this, you know, the GAC on October first had invited the school board, school board members to attend as perhaps an opportunity for board members to ask questions about the wonderful and detailed report that they provided to the school board at the end of the school year with their recommendations. So that invitation is still open. If any board member wants to attend, it is after a council meeting. But it is still an open invitation.
So I just want to, before I go into here, Ms. Tanner, are you asking for any action or anything from the board regarding the process?
Yes, I was asking for to see if there is a way that we could, if you all could agree to postpone the term limit requirement for a year so we can organize all of this, look at the bylaws, making sure that this process is working for everyone and not have to exit the folks who have been there for a while. And, you know, let us work, the four of us and with those groups, to kind of get things organized and in place.
Got it.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
And, you know, we're working through some things to make it better. So I'm, I'm not about pointing fingers at this took a point, just want to make it better. So, Mr. Cloud, this is more of an inquiry to you. I was looking at, as I was listening, because all of the, I just have to point out that committee bylaws have to be in accordance with policy that the board, they're our committees. But we have a policy for each one of these committees, policy BCF, policy BCFA, BCFB, BCFC, BCFD, all the way down for each and every one of them, which has terms in them. So in order for us to extend this for another year, which is what Ms. Tanner's asking for, could we do a, it's going to require a policy amendment or some type of, could it be a resolution or a vote from this board to designate somewhere in a resolution that we're extending it for one year and include all of them in one grouping? That's just kind of my question, because I'm trying to figure out how do we do that?
Yes, I think we can do it that way.
We can do it as one motion and then just have it set as a resolution. Okay. So if that's the case, and in the essence of time, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we extend the current terms of all members serving on our advisory committees that affect policy BCF, BCF, and BC, BCFA, BCFB, BCFC, and BCF. I got that. Yep, BCFH, that they would be extended for one additional year to conclude on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's Martin.
Ms. Martin?
I just wanted to clarify that the CAC last month did hold elections, so I'm glad that you put a deadline on that just so it wasn't that they get an extent, you know, natural extension after the fact. Because we do have a new slate of officers for that committee.
Okay.
Great. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I, I just want to state, I'm, I'm just confused by this. When the advisory committees to the school board policies were being pushed through in June, we really didn't have an opportunity to discuss that process through a work session and do this upfront work. And so when I was advocating that we do the upfront work, which is what we did before when we went through the process and made sure that we did align things with the bylaws, changes that we made in the policies in June and some appointments that we took in June got us out of sync. And so now we are putting forward a motion to extend participation by a year. We're at the same time, I thought I was hearing, we aren't clear on who's been appointed to what. So I, I support what we're trying to do. I don't think this is the appropriate method of doing it. I don't understand the connection between the extension and this meeting on, on the twenty-second. It just seems very much outside of order in terms of, you know, our, our, our processes. The, we made some changes to some policies. And even right now on board docs, the changes that we made to those policies in June aren't on board docs. And I just think the board needs to take a moment and to be clear on what our current policy is and what this action that we are proposing, you know, what it, what its impact is. You know, if, if anything, I, I think as we had suggested before, we have a policy committee. They spent time in the past reviewing these things and coming back and making recommendations. And I think recommendations of this nature need to be coming through the policy committee, vetted by the administration with opportunity for us to consider impact and community comment. So I don't want to elongate it because I think we have talked about these advisory committees quite a bit, but it seems to me we are going back to square one. And before we invite the public in to have a discussions around this process, I think it's important that the board know what the policy currently is, that is updated on board docs, and that any action that we take, we are clear on the policies and the regulations and the processes and who's currently been appointed and what their terms are and who we are extending and making sure that we have met our responsibilities as we talked about before, that we have geographic representation and all the other things that our policy calls for.
And, Mr. Jordan, I, I understand what you are commenting to. When we looked at the advisory committees, this is something that we were one hundred percent committed to, making this process better, more efficient, more fluid. And almost three of the committees, every single member's term limits, as we found out, were expired. We had no proposals for nominations. And so quite honestly, we are doing the best with what we have. We are trying to take into consideration effort to make sure that these committees are inclusive of our diverse community. And for Ms. Tanner, tracking through the paper and electronic applications of the past was quite a challenge. And I would just say, let's allow ourselves as a board the flexibility to make sure the policies on board docs are appropriately reflective of the change that we made up. There's no disagreement there. And let's, let's continue to proceed. We know now, new information, that our committee members have to receive the FOIA training. Ms. Tanner is putting forth a good effort to bring them and get them up to speed so that they know what the committees are about so that we can bring more folks to the table. And I have, I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity. And yes, there's going to be kinks in the process, but in the end, we are going to have four solid committees that are going to be bringing forth recommendations that will affect the policies that we vote on. And so, I'm not saying that you're being pessimistic, but.
I'm not being pessimistic at all. I'm just, just, just to be fair, the, none of this is about Ms. Tanner.
No, no, no. And I'm not saying it is, but.
The we that I'm referring to is the governance team, the school board, and the superintendent. And there's a process by which policies are developed and reviewed and regulations are developed and reviewed. And so I have said this for over a year. This is about the school board being effective in its role. The we, when we address these policies, is not the chair and the vice chair. The we is the school board with the review of the superintendent and her staff. If we're not going to be an inclusive we on this policy, when it deals with the school board policy of advisory committees to the school board, we are going to continue to repeat this loop that we do so often. So that's what I'm speaking to.
So, Madam Chair, as the original maker of the motion, I haven't really spoken to my motion at that opportunity. I know of members that are serving on these advisory committees, and today's motion, by. And today's motion, um, by doing this here and extending this by a year, would show confidence back to them and to these individuals who are standing in limbo, that we appreciate them. We want them to continue to work with us through this process. Um, yes, it's not the perfect process, and as we're continuing to work with things, um, but we're trying, we know that there's an end goal to make it better. Um, so with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, Ms. Tanner.
Madam Chair. Oh, how my list? No, I'm sorry.
The question's been called. Madam, proceed with the vote.
Madam Chair.
Basin.
Proceed with the vote, please.
Basin.
I'd like to put forward a, an amendment to that. I support, after hearing, you know, the concerns at, or not concerns, but suggestions at the latest GAC meeting. Uh, I know, um, I support, uh, delaying, um, the term limits.
The term limits, yes, for a year.
For a year as we figure this out. But I do want, as, as I stated and as Mr. Jordan stated, that I want, would like the motion to, to indicate that, um, any changes to the policy regulations rest with the policy committee going forward and give that direction to the policy committee to work on that.
Are you making an amendment?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, um, is there any further discussion on that item?
The amendment.
On the amendment?
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm not clear. Are we voting first on the amendment?
On the amendment first. Ms. Basin has made an amendment.
So we're going to vote yea or nay on the amendment?
She wants everything sent to the policy committee.
All right, and then when we finish doing that.
Then we'll vote on.
But on the resolution, with or without the amendment depending on.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion?
Okay. Basin?
Aye.
Camson?
Nay.
You said nay. Okay. Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Mar- uh, sorry, Smith?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
And Clanton?
Nay.
Passes. So the amendment has, um, passed. And so what that means is that the policies will go to the policy committee and will come back to the board for approval. And we will put a timeline on that as well.
Are you saying after today's vote, or you, were you claiming your amendment as sending us all the way back to the policy committee?
I'm saying to send the policies back to the policy committee to do the work of aligning them with the, with the bylaws and, uh, to ensure that they are in alignment with the state code as well as.
But you're still in favor, but you didn't touch the one-year extension, correct?
No, I'm in favor of that. No.
So, um, in that case, because I think I understood you wrong.
Yeah, I think that's a good recommendation.
Yeah, I'll send it back to the committee.
Ms. Camson?
Sending it back so they can actually clean it all the way up, after the one year.
Are we still extending?
We're going to still extend the one year.
Yes. Because that's what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
So I just want to make sure we're clear.
So, Mr. Clanton, just, just to be clear, so I'm supporting the delay.
Mm-hmm. One year, right?
Of one year, but the policy should be, uh, examined immediately.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. I just want to be sure that we're not saying we're gonna, okay.
So I'd like, Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like for my vote to reflect yea on the amendment, now that I understand exactly what you're talking about.
So would I.
So, we have the amendment, seven out. Now parliamentary question, do we need to go back and vote on the original motion?
The motion as amended now.
The motion as amended, okay. Is there a, um, is there a second for the motion as amended? No.
It's already done. So we just need to take a vote.
Okay, well then we'll just take a vote. Ms. Tanner?
Basin?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
And Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. And thank you to all the citizens who have bared with us. Now it is time for the, oh, I don't know what. If, if you don't mind, uh, board members, I would like to, um, allow the citizen comments to proceed before we go to the school board committee reports, and we can put that under matters of the board, if, if you all are in agreement with that.
No objection.
No objections? All right, citizen comments on non-agenda items. And again, the same practices are in place for the non-agenda items. State your name, whether or not you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. Please give any written statements or supporting material to the clerk. And you have a one-time appearance of three minutes, and the board does not respond to comments. Ms. Tanner?
Yes. I believe we have ten individuals, um, that's going to speak, but the first one is Whitney Davis, followed by Vicky Greco.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. My name is Whitney Davis. I was born and raised in Norfolk. I'm a graduate of Norfolk Public Schools. I'm also a former kindergarten teacher and the mother of two students at Larchmont Elementary. I'm a member of the School Health Committee and Secretary of the Norfolk Council PTA, but I'm here to speak to you tonight as the founder of More Recession for Virginia's Norfolk. First, I wanted to give a public thank you to Dr. Birdsong for making a dialogue on recess between our group and some of our NPS administrators possible. That August meeting helped us gain understanding of principals' concerns when it comes to more recess. It's our hope that more such conversations will take place on a regular basis so that the increase in recess that our children so need and deserve is not seen as a mandate from above, but rather a result of a realistic exchange between parents and educators that leads to a shift in our thinking about education culture. Our group's goal, 2020 by 2020, was not realized in the timetable we desired, that is, adding a 20-minute recess period to start this fall, but we press on. We know that under our state legislation, our district can at any time choose to expand recess. Our new 2020 by 2020 goal then is for an additional recess period of 20 minutes to be put in our elementary school schedules starting in January of 2020, so that our children get to spend the second half of their school year learning in ways that are developmentally appropriate and effective. In addition to our goal for 40 minutes of free play learning daily, we would also like our district to participate in Global School Play Day on February 5th. You all have an information sheet on that. At the very least, we would like our teachers to have the option to participate. Whole schools can register, or teachers can register their classrooms, but the goal is to commit one entire or majority day to free play. School has only just begun, and already recess has been taken away as punishment and to complete schoolwork, both of which are against policy. Already the anxiety and stress has begun for our kids. Already there are teachers taking away recess time because they think they cannot fit things they need to in their day. But when are we going to think about what our kids need? And when are we going to deliver? We must shift our thinking. You want higher test scores? More recess. Better behavior in the classroom? More recess. Better mental health, physical fitness, problem-solving skills? You want to narrow the achievement gap? More recess, more recess, more recess. Right now, our legislation allows us to give our children an experience that builds a love of learning and nurtures proper development. Please be bold with your policy change and say yes to recess. Thank you.
Next we have Vicky Greco.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Manuga-Greco. I'm an NPS parent and LTH graduate, former special educator and volunteer. And as the Education Director of the League of Women Voters of Southampton Roads, I help to lead our local league's pre-K through 12 advocacy and assist with organizing voter education efforts, including community forums such as School Board 101 and Observer Core activities, which will include community volunteers attending, observing, and where appropriate, participating in public meetings of our elected officials. Tonight I'll read the citizen comments that I had written for the August 21st School Board Business Meeting, but was not allowed to give at the time when the Acting Chair, Carlos Clanton, failed to ask for citizen comments at the end of the business meeting. Those in attendance who had wished to speak but had not signed up in time didn't get a chance to speak under the newly-developed citizen comment guidelines, which were unclear. I'll start with an illuminating passage from the introduction to the League of Women Voters Resource Guide, Observing Your Government in Action: Protecting Your Right to Know. Open quote, "What is sunshine?" As Lincoln reminded the nation in his Gettysburg Address, "Ours is a government of the people, by the people, for the people. Government exists for our benefit and is accountable to us, its citizens. However, our rights and terms of access to government information and decision-making were not codified until more than 100 years after Lincoln made his famous address. In 1966, with the passage of the Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, the federal government defined what the public has a right to know and how they can exercise that right to obtain government-held information. This was followed by the passage of the Federal Advisory Committee Act of 1972 and the Sunshine Act of 1976, both of which focused on public ac- access to government meetings. Sunshine, or openness in government, refers to two distinct areas, access to public records and access to public meetings. Regardless of what label and access law is given, sunshine, freedom of infor- of information or transparency, the premise behind its inception is that everyday people have the right to know what actions their government is taking, from watching elected officials deliberate to being able to hear testimony. Sunshine regulations afford them the right to attend public meetings and have access to public documents. They also often provide guidance about how individuals can exercise this right." Close quote. I'll end my comments by adding that this right to sunshine, to accountable transparency, just as in the case of our children, is vital to our health, our health as a school division and our health as, and our health and well-being as a community. And this right is entirely dependent on the sound and open and clear governance practices and policies of our school board leaders and officers, not on their politics. So our citizen stakeholders will wait. Citizens will wait to speak on agenda items and non-agenda items after learning of public documents and notices posted to the school board page in a timely manner as required by law. Public comments made by NPS stakeholders in person at school board business meetings are not threats. They are not tall tales. Citizen comments are input for our elected officials at our public meetings throughout the year while they are not campaigning for their office. Remarks are based on what new members of the public know, whether it's through articles in our local paper, what's available on the public portion of board docs, or other public records, and filtered through our personal experiences and firsthand knowledge. These stakeholder comments become part of our public record and are always critical, often in both senses of the word, even in the case that they lengthen school board business meetings where the work of the public is accomplished. We stakeholders will wait when necessary in order to speak. We will wait to observe at meetings. We will advocate and we will vote. Thank you.
All right, next we have Jeff Howitt. Mr. Howitt?
Hewitt.
Hewitt.
Hi, my name is Jeff Hewitt. I am a resident, excuse me, it's been a long meeting. Uh, I am a resident of Park Place. Uh, I just moved there, just bought a house there. I have two children in Norfolk Public School system. Uh, my oldest is a senior at Granby High School. Uh, my youngest is in the fifth grade at Taylor Elementary. Uh, this will be my 10th year with Taylor and my last year, so I'm going to miss Taylor. I am, uh, here to register my extreme concern, um, with the recent cancellation of Granby High School's Drama Club. This is on the heels of my initial, uh, incredible dismay to find out that Granby High School and indeed, as far as I'm still aware, every other high school in our district has no drama teacher. Theater education is in an age where we are increasingly moving towards the gig economy. We're projected to pass 50% freelancers in our economy and our workforce, uh, by 2027. We currently have 57 million freelancers working in this country. Um, and theater education teaches the various skills through a back door, through a sneaky, fun way that engages children. These skills that are vital, self-discipline, oral communication, creative problem-solving, cooperative work skills, independent management, time management, the ability to take initiative, to be adaptable, to be flexible. Uh, and above all, to meet a deadline, because the show goes on when the show goes on. I myself come from a theater background. I came up, uh, I'm just not a graduate of Norfolk Public School. Uh, I, uh, graduated from Princeton High School in 1990. Go Cavaliers. We had drama one through four. Every high school and every middle school in our school system had a drama teacher. And what's happened in the Norfolk Public School system is through a series of attrition, drama has essentially been excised from the curriculum, uh, even though it's still on the books. My daughter's an IB student. I came before this board three years ago, uh, to fight to get her an opportunity to, you know, fully apply for IB, and she has succeeded, and she's now a senior. But she's losing the one, as an IB student, she has no time. She's usually up till midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning, doing homework. She has one social outlet, and that's the drama club. I'd like to see the drama club restored, but I'm going to be back here, um, again to talk further about the need for theater education, uh, to truly prepare our kids for what's coming in the workplace. Thank you.
Next we have Vivian Monroe Hester. She's not here? No? Okay. Lula Sears Rogers.
Good evening to you all. My name is Lula Sears Rogers, and I am a member of the Concerned Citizens and a 1959 graduate of Booker T. Washington High School. I'm going to cut through the first part of what I want to say, because we keep coming back. And we just keep coming back. We've been coming back for years and years. And tonight is, I'm glad to hear somebody say something about Booker T. Washington High School, whatever you. I'm just glad to hear somebody say something about Booker T. Because we have been coming and coming, and you're talking about one thing and talking about another thing. So what can we do? I'm going back to my script now. What can we do to keep this historic landmark home to thousands e- even in and around the tidewater area and the world vibrant, bright, like it should be? You're talking to us about the CTE, the STEAM, the School of the Arts. The School of Arts could be great, but it needs further definition. Schools of the arts have playwriting, painting, cosmetology, drama, speech, journalism, dance, so many things that are not offered at Booker T. Washington High School. Young people are passing us by. You heard, you said that, that is right. The Berkeley students, the Broad Creek students, everybody is passing us by, and we are getting lower and lower. Uh, we just barely made 175 seniors marching this year, if we made 175. Uh, the, the enrollment is just so very low. Please do not forget the fact that we are in need of a new building. Please do not forget the fact that this building that we are in right now was open in September of 1974, some 45 years ago. We need a new building. We are aware that there are other high schools in line for new schools. As I said, our enrollment is low, but something must be done to help us. The lighting, the AC, the heat, the softball, baseball, tennis courts, and all are in poor condition. What can you do? What will you do to help us with this situation? As you make plans for the other schools in the city of Norfolk, please remember that Booker T. Washington High School, please place us at the top of your list. There are alumni all over the world waiting to see what you plan to do with this historic school that withstood the, the test of time. All the ma- laws of massive resistance and everything, it's still there, along with the great IC Norcom. Please help us. Thank you so very much for your time.
Deborah Ann Key, followed by Glennis Mason.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can everybody hear me? Due to, uh, other people not, uh, need to speak, I'm going to make mine short. It was supposed to be kind of long, but I'm going to make it short. My name is Deborah Ann Key. I am a graduate of Booker T., class of 1971. I have one son, but he was a graduate of Granby, so he was the opposite. However, I support everything that Booker T., wa- Territorial Washington has. However, I support everything that Booker T., Territorial Washington has proclaimed as an educator. This is a good school. We have existing here in Hampton Roads, the ACBU. But when it comes to this high school, there's something special than all the schools. I don't knock Norview, Lake Taylor, I don't hate them, but when it comes to Booker T., Booker T. is a birthing school that came out of him and we are his seeds. And we have the opportunity now to ask Norfolk Public School to do your system and do your system right by us, to keep the legacy, to keep his dream and all, as we have concerned citizens or aluminized and friends, come together in unity to have support from you and to do what God Almighty has ordained for us as people of Booker T. That's all I'm, that's all.
Glennis Mason.
Good evening, School Board Chair Dr. Gabriel, Vice Chair Mr. Clanton, Acting Superintendent Dr. Burzong, and all the members of the school board and the audience. My name is Glennis Winfield Mason and I would like to reintroduce myself to the board and introduce myself to the audience. I do not have a child at Booker T. Washington High School. I guess y'all can hear me right. I do not have a child at Booker T. Washington High School, but my daughter Raven over there, she is a graduate 2012, myself 1972, my sisters 1968, and my mother went to school at night for the song class. So we do have a history there.
That's nice.
I am the PTA president of what is and can continue to be the best high school in Norfolk Public Schools, and that is Booker T. Washington High School. Over the past three years, some renovations have been made, provided, have been provided to begin the long overdue process to maintain the building and the safety of the faculty, staff, and students. However, more is required. Therefore, I will continue to appeal to this board on behalf of the PTA, the parents, the staff, the faculty, and most important of all, the students, who without a doubt deserve the best of everything that Norfolk Public Schools has to offer its students. I look forward to a productive year of concern, attention, support, and action in making sure that Booker T. Washington High School is provided the necessary equipment, materials, resources, staff, and faculty for the education of all the students attending this school to prepare them for future endeavors. Thank you.
Ms. Myrick.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Burzong. My name is Cecile Myrick and I am a 1961 graduate of the famous Booker T. Washington High School. I graduated as a business student from Booker T. I was able to walk out the doors and get a job, not in the city of Norfolk unfortunately because they weren't looking for secretaries, that was my color. But I did get a job in New York City. I just want these kids to be able to do the same thing that I was able to do. Most kids don't like reading, writing, and arithmetic. It's boring. They don't see the need for it and in actuality, neither do I at some points. But the whole thing is, if not you, someone in the state of Virginia named this school the School of the Arts, but you forgot to put what you need in the School of the Arts: qualified staff and equipment. Therefore, without these things, the children cannot move forward. Arts is more than singing and dancing because we are predominantly black neighborhood with black children. That's what they think we are talking about: singing, dancing, being in the theaters or whatever. But that's not what arts offer the kids. There are applied arts, there are the visual arts, there are the performing arts. Arts take on a broad scope and our children can qualify when their parents do not have the money to give them the tap dance lessons, the ballet lessons, that will qualify them to get into the governor's school. They don't have the money, but if Booker T. had the resources and the things that they needed, these kids can go on to be the people that they want to be as they grow up. And picking back on the young man that spoke ahead of me, arts programs have the potential to help young people improve their memory, concentration, their skills develop, they have the decision-making skills that become developed, critical thinking skills that are easily developed when they are offered things in the arts department that fit their schedule because they are dealing with things that they have a vested interest in. So therefore, they have a stake in their own futures by getting the education that they're promised. First, secondly, you keep putting things up that keep redistricting our neighborhoods. Kids that live down in the Broad Creek area walk to Booker T. and from Liberty Park, Bowling Park, and those places every day for three, four years until they graduate a high school. Now, those kids go to Lake Taylor, Norview, and everywhere else, but they don't come to Booker T. And the same thing is about to happen again with the St. Paul thing. You're shutting down all the projects in that area where these are kids that make up the staff, the students in Booker T. So what is left for Booker T. to do at this point? Can you please tell me, is there a future for Booker T.? You keep saying, yes, yes, yes. I don't believe you. I'm gonna quote some of what my Sunday School teacher used to tell me: "Tell the truth and let the good Lord love you." Have a good evening.
Good evening, members of the school board, superintendent, and chairman. Heard a lot tonight. Some of my concerns were answered and some multiplied. I've been a member of the, excuse me, my name is Carl Stokes. I'm a citizen of Norfolk, graduated from Booker T. Washington High School, retired from the National Technologies Associate as a logistics manager for the Navy and Marine Corps Aircraft My concerns are that I've been a member of Concerned Citizens for about two years and come back to these school board meetings month after month after month, and some of the same questions and concerns are raised every month. Now, your process here, you don't reply to the questions and answers and so forth. When do you reply to them? We come back here month after month after month with the same things. Give us some answers and address our concerns and we'll go away. But those answers and concerns have to be able to help those kids who are in those schools right now. When they graduate, they are able to get a sustaining job or able to enter a college or go into the military. They got to be able to stand on their feet and the programs that are at that school now will not do that. Those programs need to be expanded. The CTE program, I understand that was approved of Booker T. years ago. It's still not there. Last year, a year before, you were talking about STEAM and STEM, still not there. We're the School of the Arts. But to bring, that's okay, but to bring the talents and, and just the brilliance out of those, out of those kids, you need more than a piano or a little paintbrush with a piece of canvas. If you're gonna call it the School of the Arts, then you need to put the equipment there, put the teachers there. The facilities need to be upgraded and you've already admitted tonight that what happens to Granby and Murray, it happens. Booker T. Always delayed. Thank you.
Mr. Lovett.
Roberto Lovett, 1971 graduate Booker T. Washington, retired firefighter. Good afternoon, Dr. Burzong, Dr. Gabriel, and Mr. Clanton. When I went to Booker T., I knew a lot of people. Now, I look across the ball, it doesn't seem clear on what's going on. So all I ask, let y'all help Booker T. in whichever way y'all are doing. We will be so proud of y'all. That's myself. Thank you very much.
And that's all of our speakers for this evening.
Thank you very much to all of the speakers coming tonight and for sharing your thoughts and concerns with the board. We really do appreciate it. Next item on the board agenda, school board committee reports. Board members serve on certain committees and we will be reporting out on the efforts that are being made and updates on these various committees. Tonight, we have updates from facility, legislative, and CTE. So Mr. Clanton and Mr. Jordan collectively serve on the facilities committee and Dr. Burzong, the member of your staff that is liaison is?
Yes, it would be Mr. Hazellet for Facilities.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jordan, Mr. Clanton, any items to report out to the board?
I'll yield to Mr. Jordan.
I was gonna yield to you. So actually, I appreciate that. So actually, in that spirit, there was a facilities committee meeting last week. We had the opportunity to bring Mr. Hazellet up to speed on the work that the staff has been working with the committee on for, for some time. As you all know, we had originally set a goal of trying to bring back to the board some recommendations around the purpose and structure of the committee during the summer timeframe. We didn't get the chance to do that just because we had so many things going on. We've decided that we're going to go back and work again and our hope is, is that for the January retreat timeframe, that we can come back and give the board some consideration and recommendations for the purpose and goals of the committee. Our discussion continues to be around aligning it with the school board-approved accountability plan, which speaks to the five-year capital and so forth. You know, one, one thing that we did mention a bit, we know that there's going to be ongoing pressures around budget time and, and we accept that. We know that our facilities condition index and the work that we've done, we know that Norfolk Public Schools is woefully underfunded based upon our facility and infrastructure needs. What we would ask the board to do is to give the committee some breathing room so that we can work together and do our work and come forward with recommendations and to the extent possible, not jump over the work of the committee so that the, the board is trying to deal with some immediate issues with the strategic, long-term planning that we think is necessary that aligns with the accountability plan. So if we can make that happen, I think that we can put forward some solid recommendations for the board to consider moving forward. That affair.
Yeah, I think we gave a date, didn't we, say like January?
January, I mentioned that.
Yeah, January.
And if, if Dr. Burzong would allow us anything that Mr. Hazellet or Ms. Ingram, who's, who's chairing, you know, from the staff perspective, if there's anything that they would like to add or correct, you know, I think Mr. Clanton and I will, will accept that. Comfortable.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. Legislative Committee, Ms. Martin, Mr. Clanton?
Okay. November is the annual Bring Your Legislator to School Day and Mr. Clanton and I have met and, and also communicated with Ms. Tanner, make, you know, what we're doing to make preparations for that day. We don't have a day selected yet. We, a doodle poll has gone out to our legislators to see what day works best for them and we have selected South Side STEM Academy as our location and what we're trying to do is have a, a morning program with them, do a tour of the school and have some type of interactive activity with them, kind of show off what's going on in, in the school and what, you know, what the children are accomplishing and, and the curriculum there. And so there's gonna be more information to come and we're looking forward to an exciting day.
Great, thank you. Okay, and finally, the CTE Committee. All right. I'll just give a, a brief update on that, but so the working group is still working away. Yesterday, I was able to participate with a couple of members of the working group and Governor Ralph Snorthem, tour of the state of Virginia, he made a stop at Thomas Nelson Community College, I'm sorry, TCC, to hear feedback from community members and business leaders on workforce development. And we were able to highlight the fact that Norfolk Public Schools won the $1.1 million grant from the Hugh Odom Foundation and what that means for our hospitality program. The audience was really surprised to hear, they were excited about it. And we were also talking about how guidance counselors actually are, play a very important part in guiding parents and students on career tracks that are not just college-oriented but also career-focused in what the possibilities are. So I think, I think that we brought some very important items to the agenda. They will be discussing budget items and the issue of guidance counselors and supporting SOQ funding for longer time for guidance counselor when it actually came up, which I thought was a really interesting point. So that's where we are on that item and as we discussed in the, the previous item, the work will still continue on the CTE discussion of our high school and I look forward to all the discussions.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, so the, the working group you're referring to is the working group on the career and technical high school versus the CTE Advisory Committee that, okay, just wanna make sure I'm clear. All right, thank you.
The CTE Advisory Committee has not yet had a meeting, correct?
Who's attached to that?
They have had, okay, then we, what we will do is we will.
Would that be? When would the meeting start?
We'll get the copy of the schedule then and we'll be able to report out on that. Okay, thank you very much. Now on to item 7.07, Matters of the Board. I know that, any members in particular, I know that Ms. Smith had a comment for Matters of the Board. Anything else? Ms. Smith?
I have a few. Dr. Burzong, this year when we present the budget books, I would like for us to include the faculty and staff demographics along with the student demographics for each school. I think that's information that would be very valuable, not only to this board but to the community as well.
Dr. Burzong, I also like the school teacher allocation comparative chart that I've been asking for, for quite some time.
Clarify that, please.
The teacher allocation comparison by school that I'd like to see.
Okay, so we were presented several forms of, of data that you wanted and unfortunately for the past two or three meetings that we had an opportunity to discuss it, the board did not agree upon a format. So as soon as the board agrees upon a format that you would like us to use to provide that information, we have no issues with providing that data.
But when was it provided to the board to agree upon? It wasn't provided to the board to agree upon.
You asked for, it was my understanding, there were several different ways you wanted the data displayed. And so we were trying to get some clarification on what that. And so we were trying to get some clarification on what that needed to look like. Because again, we're happy to provide whatever information the board would like.
There was one way that I would like it displayed. The information that you provided to me, I returned it to you and said, that wasn't it. And then, then at our meeting last Wednesday, I provided you a sketch of the information that I would like.
Okay.
And a lot of it is already provided to the state, so I'm not understanding why I can't get that information.
And to be clearly transparent, we have no issues with hiding any type of data. I did provide that to Mr. Billups, and again, not for him to take any action on it. It just appears that, I guess because we don't have any established norms and protocols with our work, I get several requests of me to provide individual reports to board members. And we've always agreed upon, as a division, a governance team, that when information reports are required from the administration, that the board would give us some direction as opposed to having individual board members email at me every day about different requests. Again, we have no issues with being fully transparent. We're all about giving you the information that you need so you can move forward with your work. But again, it becomes very confusing when we get conflicting direction daily. So if we can just respectfully agree upon what the board wants from us, we will happily oblige to that.
Okay, and just to be clear, I don't think there's an attempt to hide anything. I just think that a lack of communication is the issue in terms of just being clear with can it be provided and how soon it can be provided. Because two or three months later and not seeing anything that is useful.
So let me.
And if I may for just, again, we've discussed this a couple of times about what the board wanted the administration to do. And to this date, the board has not given us clear direction in terms of what they wanted the report to look like. Again, we're happy to do with whatever you would like us to do.
So are you asking me to get a consensus from the full board as to what we would like that report to look like?
Well, that has been the practice of board members not emailing the superintendent individually about data requests, report requests. It was always agreed upon that it would be the will of the board in terms of what information needed to be provided to the school board and not to an individual board member respectfully.
Okay, so along those same lines, when I emailed Dr. Gabriel, you and my, me and you, Dr. Burzong, the email exchange about the achievement gap and wanting a presentation on that, I was told that that will be done as a part of our accountability plan. And before that presentation takes place, it should be at the will of the board. And the board should have an opportunity to discuss it during a work session where we all can sit down and say what we would like to see in that presentation before it is presented to us.
Ms. Smith, hold on a second. I just wanna make sure that we're very clear. The accountability plan that the administration and Ms. Campson worked very, very hard on outlines a format of how the data is reported out. And there was very specific intentional input on the achievement gaps. And we're looking at, and I even recall Mr. Jordan making a suggestion about where we measure ourselves against because we were looking at the different demographics with, you know, Asian students, African-American students, Caucasian students. And so in October, the plan is to look at that disaggregated data, the achievement gaps, look at the ESSA schools, look at the schools that are unaccredited. It's all outlined in the accountability plan, so.
But even before we get to that, Dr. Gabriel, I think we should be able to have a discussion that centers around what the administration, an overview, what we currently have in place, what is currently working for us, what's not working for us, what would we like to see discussed in this closing of the achievement gap, things that we can improve upon. We should be able to have that basic foundation of a discussion before we get into the data of it. And even, hold on, and even with the data part of it, I'm tired of just seeing numbers. I am ready for us to see, have information presented to us that has, that is results-driven with some type of plan of action associated to it that is geared towards results.
Right, and I would say that when the board spent time on the priorities, that was the time for us to prioritize where we wanted the focus of the administration. And then when the board voted on the accountability plan, that was the board's commitment to say, this is where we want our attention focused. Of course, it's not just a data reporting. It is, it is the premises of this, this is the data that we have, what are we doing with it? And it is up to the administration to tell us how they are using the data, how they are building upon it, the, as the term goes, the glows and the grows for the data. There is no one here that just wants to look at numbers and be like, all right, those numbers are fine. We want to see the action that's taking place in the schools. So I think we're on the same page as far as what the expectations are. But that's what the accountability plan is. Ms. Basine?
Yeah, I just wanna piggyback on what Christina said. I think, Dr. Burzong, you raised a lot of good points and reminders about, you know, our process for the data request. However, as has already been stated, you know, we have the accountability plan in place. But I think Ms. Smith's comments really highlight the fact that we, we had discussion on it. We had discussion about, you know, what data we would like to see, how we would like, what we, in what form we would like it. But we haven't talked about how the data can really tell a story. And that's really what, it's not just for the administration to say, you know, this is what the data, this is what the data's telling us. But it's also for us to say, this is the way we want to examine the data. A number on a page doesn't mean anything unless it's tied to a specific action or correlated with factors that impact that result. And so I think we have gotten, you know, one area of concern, which I too have raised, is that I think we've gotten, it seems, I should say, it seems that we have gotten a little bit away from aligning our agenda planning with the accountability plan report structure that we have at the back of the accountability plan in terms of whether we get a report, a presentation, and when we would get that. Ms. Smith's request, from my perspective, isn't a new request where a will of the board is really necessary because looking at teacher retention and allocation and all of that is already in our accountability plan. But perhaps it is not, you know, the data that is being asked for in there may not be as complete as we would like. And maybe, I do think that that is something that we should have discussion around. And that's what I feel I'm hearing Ms. Smith say. It's not, in my, you know, in my eyes, a new data request. It's just, can we, can we actually adhere to the accountability plan and allot some time to have that discussion around teacher retention and allocation?
So my recommendation would be, Ms. Smith, if you could, if you could share with the board the specific request that you have of the format with the HR questions that you have, share that with the board. Dr. Burzong, if you could see how that aligns with the accountability plan report out. And again, the norm that we have followed is as long as it's not new data, then it can be readily considered. However, if the administration has to take extra time, then Dr. Burzong then puts it back on us and says, this is the extra time that it's going to take. Is this the will of the board that would like for me to continue with this? And so.
It's not new data.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, would you mind just, just since we're having this discussion right now?
Again, to be clear, Mr. Billups was fully prepared to provide the data in any format that the board wanted. I think there were four or five different formats he was able to develop and was ready to move forward, so.
No. But I'll move on to my next comment. And this is piggybacking on the last meeting. I'd like to see, if possible, some type of an evaluation of, like, a program evaluation of the students at Berkeley Campus Stella Early Childhood Development Center and their movement through the system to STEM Academy. And if it fits on and how they're progressing. Their POW scores show that they're progressing extremely well. And we see the impact of STEM Academy and what's happening there. And we'd like to see if they're, or I would like to see, if they're retaining that or if it's being lost. And then put that with this accountability plan that we keep talking about and see how we can fix it.
Would you like that to be an internal or an external evaluation of the program?
Well, you tell us what's best. And then we can make a decision from there. Tell us the pros and cons of the two, and then we can make an informed decision.
I'll have to consult with our ARA department because sometimes we conduct program evaluations internally and sometimes we do them externally. So we have a clear understanding of the scope of what we need to look at. We can certainly make a decision.
We would appreciate your coaching in that area.
Absolutely.
Any other items for matters of the board? Madam Chair? Okay, Ms. Basine?
I know it's late and we have still a ways to go tonight. But I think, you know, some of the issues that we've talked about today, including, I think what really is the fuel behind what I hear is some frustration from Ms. Smith is that, you know, over the past 14 months, I feel like there's been a concerning trend, which I believe is interfering with our roles and responsibilities as board members. There's been behavior that has run counter to our norms and protocols where some board members, you know, may be making requests that others aren't, and those requests are being, are being met. Communication to some board members is being provided where others are not. Select board members, including myself, have been censored during public enclosed meetings while others have been given the floor at enormous amounts of time. Ideas, requests, or recommendations from board members have been disregarded or ignored, which is where I think we keep coming back to some of the discussions like we're having tonight. And there are also some legal and other ethical matters that have been left resolved, several of them actually, over the past year. I feel that as elected representatives, by deliberately diminishing our responsibility as board members, we are also diminishing the very citizens we serve. And I'm demanding an immediate change in behavior because we can't go on like this. It's not good for the district, it's not good for our students, and so there has to be change. And I would love, I wanna hear that commitment from you especially to help make that happen. Dr. Gabriel? I'm just gonna leave that there.
Madam Chair, I have comments.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clayton, I can yield if you like.
No, I can yield to you.
I like that. Just real quick, I think, two things. I would like for the citizens' comment period to be reassembled as it was before until we have such time to discuss it. Since it, since the comments have been bifurcated, every meeting there have been, there's been confusion by the public. There have been those that have spoken on agenda items with non-agenda comments. I think if we're gonna follow this model, as we know, we know Virginia Beach is an example of someone who follows the bifurcated model. They start at 6 o'clock. So I feel bad for our student reps who I know, we should make sure we are clear to them that they always have the option to go study. But we started the citizens' comment on non-agenda items at 10 minutes to 9. And if we have young people, as we talked about earlier with the superintendent search, that want to be engaged, I think that we have to consider that timeframe. So when you look at the Virginia Beach process, it's much more spelled out, it's clear. You know, whether you agree with the process or not, at least it is a clear process. And I think we have this ongoing theme where we are implementing things without taking the time to go through some processes to make sure that we have that policy review and that the administration has time to recommend recommendations to us, regulations so that things run smoothly. The other thing I just wanted to mention, going back to the conversation we had earlier around Booker T. and other schools and all these rumors that get out there around attendance zones and who can attend and who cannot attend. Two policies, like for the board and the community, you can go look at them as well. Attendance Zones, there's a policy, J C Z. So Attendance Zones are the responsibility of the school board. No one else has the authority or ability to tell the school board what our attendance zones are. We have public input, we can make decisions, we've been doing education planning, we have changed attendance zones. There is a process that we go through, public hearings, and then we take a vote. So anyone that is out there saying that a certain projected attendance zone has been decided is outside of the policy and the authority of the school board. The other policy deals with charter schools. There is a process. There is a school board-induced or recommended charter school. There's a process where anybody can put in an application for a charter school. That policy is L C. So if you read the charter school policy, L C, it clearly defines what a school board-initiated charter school is and what it is not. But the school board, who has authority, if it's doing, decides to do a initiated charter school, the school board is in the position to set parameters and framework. And so while others may have ideas and concepts, unless the school board decides to give over its power and authority, then whether it's attendance zones or whether it's with a school-initiated charter school, we have that power and authority. And I just wanna make sure when we're out there communicating to the public that we are clear on what our policies are and what the practice is so we can help stem some of the confusion, I think, that's out there. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Clayton?
So I appreciate the comments that Mr. Jordan just gave in regards to the policies and also there's state code regarding charter schools. At the last meeting, I'd asked for support, and I just want those who are still left here that for Booker T. Washington High School that were looking at the second week in October, and we've sent a message over to Principal Stallins to identify for you, myself, and Ms. Smith, and those members of the community so that we can have that discussion and to begin to answer some of those questions. I do wanna go to an earlier item in regards to the statement that was made about the approval of the agenda. I just wanna put clarification that approval of the agenda particularly is done at bodies that don't meet all the time. And so directly from Robert R. Ward, I just wanted for clarity out of here. Organizations in meetings in which adoption of an agenda is customary, it is customary to adopt an agenda or program for each session in organizations that do not hold frequent regular meetings. We have meetings every month. And at conventions and other sessions that are at least several days. This is frequently done for any reason, neither to stand order of business nor special order or special established rule of organization for particular applicable. Essentially, we meet every month, and we've established a process through our agenda planning, and that's the time. And it states that board members have the opportunity to send items before the agenda planning process. So as far as putting it on our agenda, it is not an item that has to be placed on our agenda in a regular meeting because we are meeting, we're a body that meets every month. The last thing that I just wanted to state, I've known Dr. Gabriel for a long time. I've known her since high school. And we debate, we knew each other from the debate tournament, you've heard of Sarah's stories there. I was at Maury, she was at Granby. I was at Maury, she was at Granby. She was a policy debater, which they're just speed readers, but I was a Lincoln Douglas debater. And in Lincoln Douglas, one of the things that I, I remembered in, from my coaching and practicing was an old fable about the old wise man and the young boy. And the story just simply goes like this, and I don't want to take a lot of time, is that there was an old wise man and then the old, the old wise man was all-knowing in this town. And so there was a young boy who sought out to prove that the old wise man wasn't so wise. And so he had devised a plan to go and ask a simple question of the old wise man. And that was simply, "Old wise man, tell me whether or not this bird that I have in my hand is dead or alive." So he decided that if he would go to the old wise man and, and he asked the question and the old wise man said that the bird was dead, he'd just simply turn around and open his hands and let the bird fly away. But if the old wise man said that the bird was alive, he simply crushed the bird. So he asked the old wise man and the old wise man stood back and he said, "Old wise man, tell me, I have a bird in my hand. Is it dead or alive?" And the old wise man sat back and he stood there for a second and he said, "Okay, I'm ready to answer." And so he said, "Okay." And the young boy was already ready. He, he already knew that he had outsmarted the old wise man. And the old wise man just simply said, "Young man, the decision is in your hands." I say that here today to us on this board. I've heard a lot of blame. I've heard individuals come before this podium and who have stated certain things about members of this board and this board as a whole. But I tell you right now, individuals have not picked up a phone, have not sent an email, have not tried to have conversation. And so I say to those and to our community and those watching that at least this board member, and I know others, are willing to listen, who are ready to make the right decision, who we know that the decisions are in our hands and the respect that if our students are going to be first in priority, that we've got to do it. And also, you know, with my colleagues on this board, I said it on the day that I took my oath, that I refuse to be disagreeable, just to be disagreeable. I'm not going to always agree with everything that's said, but that we have conversation. And I hope I extended that in demonstrating that to Mr. Jordan this past week. We didn't agree last week. What we sat down and was saying, it was going to be a 10-minute conversation, we ended up talking for a whole hour. But I want to have more conversations like that. And so individuals who come here and get to a podium and do not allow us the opportunity knowing that we can't speak back, I encourage you to pick up a phone, encourage you to set up a time to have a meeting. I encourage you to send an email so that we can begin to have conversation. That is the only way that we move our district forward. That is the only way that we begin to bring about true change. And so that's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? Earlier in the session, and I'll just be very brief, I did want to just acknowledge the work that has been done by the administration on the Student Handbook. A lot of the students went home with this book. It's wonderful. On the back of the book, it has all of the mascots of the schools and I, I ran into many parents who just wanted to share their comments about how they thought it was very easy to understand, they liked it, and they feel like they are truly a part of the communication and the process. The board has some unfinished business that we need to go back into closed session for, so I would like to have a, let's see, a motion to adjourn the meeting and then to go into closed session.
No, we're still, we have to come out, so...
So we'll have a motion to proceed to closed session then.
Madam Chair, I move that we enter closed session.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Miss...
Nope. A motion.
Just clarification, to proceed into closed session based on the previous motion?
Yes.
No, I don't think there's any need for that.
No, it's an incidental motion, so we don't need it.
Section of the legal matters, and I instructed Ms. Tanner, unless anybody has something they want to further discuss that was raised. Student matters, right? No, read, read the motion.
Ms. Tanner, if you could, yep, okay.
Boo that the members of the school board are going to a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711, excuse me, Freedom of Information Act, as amended for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to the subsection eight of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the motion are a consultation with legal counsel concerning legal matters related to the personnel and student support matters identified above and a pending response to a Freedom of Information Act request.
The only discussion will be the Freedom of Information Act.
Basine?
Nay. I stated earlier my objection to going into closed session as...
Johnson?
Are we voting?
We're voting to go into closed session.
Yes.
Clanton?
I'm going to vote yea and Mr. Cloud has already addressed that earlier, that objection.
Smith?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.